Reach outreach program we did, we did run our online workshop. It's held between March and 19th and April 7th. Our YouTube video was viewed 80 times and we had a total watch time of 7.5 hour, 7.4 hours. So it felt like it was due pretty good. We did receive 24 comments that you dot, we had our U dot agents working with these people to help them understand any concerns they have. And so that was, uh, that was a workshop we held recently. There wasn't any, any getting real negative comments, mostly just about time and schedule, concerns about how the process will work and any home improvement reimbursements that they were curious about, so.
Scott, I just want to make mention on this one. So as far as the right away outreach, we'd planned to have somewhat of an open house to where people could come, look at, and we only invited the people who were actually, were actually by their properties. So they'd come, they could see our exhibits, but with this COVID-19, uh, we had to think quickly because we'd already sent out advertisements for our, for our public open house. So what we, instead of, of holding that open house at the local elementary school, we've put together this YouTube video and I thought it went pretty well. So and just, I just wanted to explain why we had one online rather than in person and I'm sure you guys will understand.
Yeah. All right. So after, so that's recently completed. And, uh, this is kind of the impacts of the studies, uh, determined for the preferred alternative. So on the right side, we're talking about 75 full acquisitions. So this incurred includes 15 commercial properties. These are in the area of the 1900 West and 56 South intersection, uh, several properties along the west side of 1900 West and the south side of 56 South in, in that intersection vicinity. We have 58 residential impacts, uh, those are along the corridor of 56 South, mostly on the south side, a couple on the north side are where we have a pond or two. And then two vacant parcels on the west end of the project where we, where water quality and detention. So that's, uh, the total takes and the total acquisitions. Uh, the partial acquisitions, uh, 46 commercial, uh, properties, uh, there's a lot in this, these storage sheds that run along the west side of the freeway here, North 56. So there's, that counts as many of those. Twenty-two residential has partials. Partial means kind of, we had to buy the front of your property, uh, to facilitate the widening of the road. However, your business or building your house is setback far enough that you can remain there, uh, but we do need a strip of property along the front. So that's a partial acquisition. Any questions on these numbers? Okay. Um, timeline, some next steps as we mentioned, we're trying to get to a, uh, publish the EA and get to a public hearing. COVID-19 is kind of, uh, put that in a little bit of a unknown scenario here. We are working with you dot to establish a platform that we can hold a public, uh, public meeting, uh, online and meet the requirements of the fed, federal government on these, uh, environmental valuations. Uh, they think they have a system that they're going to accept and use. Um, you dot hopes that's in place and available by July. So we're hopeful to have a public meeting, uh, in July sometime or this summer that we can keep this project moving forward. If we can get the, hold the public hearing in summer, we then would have a decision document in the fall and this, uh, we'll complete the final, uh, decision document for this environmental assessment and be able to finish it, close it out and move forward to the next phase if we can, which is then designing construction. So right now, uh, all transportation funds are kind of allocated through 2024. Uh, but, uh, this plan is on the phase one language plan. So it's supposed to happen sometime between 2020 and 2030. So right now we're, it looks like 2025 or, or maybe a few years after that, uh, in order to give this project some funding for construction right away. Tom, I don't know if you have more to add about that or?
No, I, I don't. I think, I think you covered it. It's just as far as the, yeah, the timing for the project, it's, it's currently unfunded, but we anticipate anywhere between 2025 and 2030.
Okay. Uh, that's kind of the end of our presentation. I don't know if there's any questions from the council that, uh, you have for us more than you've already asked?
I had a comment.
Hey?
I just, uh, Mr. Brayden Mitchell again, I wanted to thank you guys for going with the spooey under there. You tried some kind of weird experimental things in, in Leighton and some other areas. And I think the spooey is the thing that works the best. Um, and, and so I appreciate that for that particular place.
You didn't want a through turn, huh?
I don't want any of the weird things that you've tried. I think the spooey over the 84 works, it works wonderfully and it works in Salt Lake, you know, fourth south, some of those places. So I'm, I'm glad you're sticking with it up here.
Thanks for your comment.
Well, this is a busy interchange in areas. So spooey really is the type of interchange that really works really good. So there you go.
Are there any other questions for?
Scott, this is Brian Ellis. Just wondering how you're going to handle that, the flow of traffic during all this construction and then build different roads or keep a couple of lanes open? What are the plans for that ongoing traffic?
Uh, I don't know if we've really determined, uh, how we'll handle the major traffic. I mean, we're widening the road quite a bit, so you should be able to widen to the south side and, and build some new road and then move traffic over while you, um, build the north side. So, uh, as far as the corridor goes, so I mean, there would be, I'm sure we'll acquire the lanes, you know, one lane each direction be kept open there for 56 South, which is kind of where you're at today. So, uh, as far as the integrate of the interchange, I mean, that will have to be studied, see how we'll construct that and make that happen with traffic.
Yeah, and you not, you dots committed to try to keep traffic flowing best they can. I mean, you've probably driven a lot of, uh, you dot projects to where we're still able to maintain probably a similar amount of lanes. It might be a little bit restricted and it might, might be a little bit slower, but we really try to, to be least impactful to traffic because, uh, we understand the importance of, you know, commerce and people commuting and get to work and recreation and stuff like that. So we really try to keep, you know, the lanes open as best we can to, to just keep the public.
Right.
I anticipate that'll be the same for this project. And there will be inconveniences, but for the most part, we'll, you know, try to keep traffic flowing best we can.
Anything else? Hey, we thank you, uh, Scott and Tom. I don't know if Ken ever came in or if he's at the other briefing, but we thank you very much for bringing this to us and for the presentation tonight. I agree with Brayden on the spooey and, uh, we've looked at this before with you and it looks like, uh, overall a good plan. We do appreciate that double turn on the Riverdale Road off of, uh, the I-15 exit because that's, uh, that's huge for us. We appreciate you getting right on that, making that change, so.
Maybe one thing before we close, uh, Mayor, could, if you can, if the city gets any comments or has any questions regarding our project, if you would, uh, just steer them to the project website, um, and I don't know, Scott, Lucas, do you have maybe, uh, the, the web address for our project site? On, on the project site, it'll have a contact email and a phone number for people to contact. And Kent will be the one, they will probably fill those comments. So rather than the city, you know, spinning their wheels on trying to answer, answer these questions, if it's related to our project, just maybe refer them to the project website or, uh, uh, it has Kent's information on there, I think.
All right. It's a u dot dot u dot dot gov slash 56 south EA is the address for the website.
Say that one more time.
So u dot, u dot dot u dot dot gov.
The u, Utah.
Yes, u dot dot Utah dot gov.
Thank you. I'm, u dot dot Utah dot gov slash 5600 south EA altogether.
South spelled out?
South is spelled out.
He must've been the guy that came up with that thing in Leighton, right?
I live close to that, so I'm not sure I'm, I'm gonna stay away from that.
I just traveled that, that area quite a bit and it was very congested. But since they did the through turns, whether it's, whether it's because they work really well or people just don't drive down there anymore, it, uh, the traffic is much lighter.
Probably some of each.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, we appreciate your time.
Thank you very much for being with us tonight and for helping us to understand the project. So.
Thank you.
You bet. Good luck to you tonight. Drive safe.
Yep.
Probably already home, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, move on next. Go ahead. Okay, we'll move on next to the consent items. There's two consent items this evening. The first is to considerate to approve the meeting minutes from May 5th, 2020, the city council work session, the city council regular session, and the strategic planning meeting that were all held that same evening. Uh, we had one, uh, correction in our work session. Are there any other changes or corrections at this point? Seeing none, do we have a motion on the, uh, meeting minutes?
Motion to approve the consent items?
Second.
Just consent item one, okay.
Okay, we can do just one if you want. That's, that's good. We'll just do the minute, the minutes.
Yeah, let's just do the minutes first, so. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, unanimous in favor, uh, the motion passes. Move on to consent items number two. Uh, this is consideration to set a public hearing on June 16th, 2020 to receive and consider comments regarding the following. First, amending the Riverdale city budget for fiscal year 2019 through 2020 as needed. Uh, the second item is adopting the Riverdale city final budget for fiscal year 2020, uh, through 2021. The third item is proposed amendments to the Riverdale city code. It's the human resource manual 1-7-2, which includes salaries of city council and mayor and 1-7-6 salary of the justice court judge. Uh, the fourth item, item D culinary water utilized by the city's general operations and the corresponding nonreciprocal inter fund transfer to the city's enterprise water for the water, water enterprise fund. We have any questions or comments on, uh, consent item number two? With that, do we have a motion on the consent item?
Motion to approve consent item number two.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous in favor, thank you. We'll move on next to, uh, action items, uh, have four action items tonight. Uh, the first consideration of resolution 2020 dash 09, this is to approve a development agreement with the DRH company, the development of land in the 550 West and Riverdale Road redevelopment area. Mr. Eggers.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, appreciate that. Looks like the Hanson has joined us and he's available if there's any questions for him. I'll give just a brief introduction. Uh, like was discussed in the work session, uh, this is a development agreement document that's been worked on with Roger and Dee and myself for quite a while. Uh, Dee's attorney Wade Budge, uh, prepared the document that we started with and it's since, uh, developed into two agreements that makes the most sense with portions that are associated with the relationship of the city to Mr. Hanson, some of the deliverables he's looking for with the agreement and then some items that are later to be discussed with the RDA board. Um, we have since reviewed and updated all of the information we've talked about and added into the document as the final form you have in your packet tonight. Uh, you can see some of those revisions and, and comments that have been addressed in the working format of that document in your packet. Uh, this clean and the working document version of this agreement has been provided to Steve Brooks, our city attorney. He's reviewed that. You can see his commentary in your packet reflecting he's comfortable with the agreement is represented. Um, and this would allow then Dee hereafter to, um, continue forward with the RDA board and some of their efforts to develop up the 550 West and move the RDA areas, as has been discussed in previous RDA board meetings. Uh, with that, uh, I would defer to Dee if he has anything else he would like to add or Roger if they would like to comment on anything and then we'll go from there, Mayor.
Thank you.
Uh, I'll, I'll go first real quickly. Uh, I want to thank Mike for working through this and, uh, Steve and also Roger for all the time you spent on it. Uh, I think it's consistent with what we've talked about, uh, with the RDA board and we're looking forward to, you know, moving forward with this, uh, with this project and with the next meeting with the RDA as well.
Okay, any questions on this, uh, resolution? Any comments?
I had a comment. Um, it, it's very heavy on, uh, legal jargon, legal, uh, you know, the wording and stuff. So, uh, I, I hope Mr. Brooks is not coming for rela, relying on him because, um, I mean, we really are relying on, he, he's made a good decision here, um, at least, at least me personally. Um, yeah.
It is pretty complex. Any other comments or questions? Do we have a motion then on resolution 2020 dash 09? Mayor? Go ahead.
Uh, move to approve number 20 dash 09. It's within the packet. No corrections needed.
Second.
Hey, we got a motion. We got a second. Uh, Ms. Stevens, would you pull the council piece on the resolution?
Councilmember Ellis? Okay. Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
It's unanimous in favor. Did you get, uh, Councilor Ellis's vote?
I never heard a yes. I don't know where he is.
I can see him. He's right in front of me. Brett? Maybe he's dozed off.
It, it looks like, Mayor, this is Dee, it looks like it appears it's trying to connect. It's just circling online.
Yeah, his picture just wandered away. Councilor Ellis, uh, are you there? We go with the four positive votes, Steve, and do we come back and vote later?
We're okay. You, you got a majority. You're fine.
It's a majority, uh, four and, uh, four votes in favor. Thank you. Okay, let's go to action item two. This is consideration of ordinance 918 to approve subdivision request for the Old Mill subdivision located approximately 4225 South, 700 West in Riverdale as requested by Old Mill Partners LLC. Mr. Eggers?
Thank you, Mayor. As you noted, Old Mill Partners LLC, uh, we discussed this in the work session, so some of this may be a little, um, duplicative, but we'll move forward. They're represented by Hugh Park and Lori Thurgood. Uh, this site is specifically located in the single family residential R-1-8 zone. This is a traditional subdivision site plan and plot request by Old Mill Partners. On April 14th, 2020, it went before the planning commission wherein the, the, was, there was a motion made by the planning commission to recommend to city council favorable approval of the site plan and plot for Old Mill subdivision with understanding that outstanding staff concerns and engineering concerns be resolved. That was a favorable recommendation from them. Um, since that time, outstanding staff and engineering concerns have been resolved to the satisfaction of city staff and city engineering is found within your packet. Um, there's no public hearing element required for the subdivision. The, uh, options before the council tonight are to approve, approve with any modificate modifications or conditions table or, uh, deny the request with appropriate findings of facts should the applicant receive a favorable approval. Uh, we can move forward with the, the plugging signatures, the, uh, security for the project and then move forward with recreation and reconstruction activities, again, with the understanding that some of the outstanding items, as evidenced by Mr. Douglas, be resolved prior to, um, recording anything. Um, the current ownership is listed as Old Mill Partners LLC. Previously, the property was owned, um, as an agricultural property with some future, uh, hope or, or desire to make it a religious assembly location. That's obviously since been, uh, not the plan and Old Mill Partners has acquired the ownership of that property. Um, as it relates to the general plan guidance for the site, it is listed due to that previous goal or plan as a religious assembly, it's an institutional site. This would need to be updated and then update to the general plan, master land use element. We would do that to residential low density, all surrounding properties are residential low density and this would be compliant with their neighboring uses and not a problem for that. Um, without spending too much time going at length in the review of the staff comments, I just want to note Mr. Douglas's comments on the record as there are a few outstanding items with his and then briefly note the escrow element of it and I believe that that should be all at this time. Uh, Mr. Douglas just notes in his review under stormwater, the drainage system, long-term operations and maintenance plan has been submitted. There are future changes that need to be made prior to recording. The plant will need to be recorded with plat prior to construction. The notice of intent to be filed with state before project starts. Under streets, he says the road seal for the subdivision should be an HA5 seal or a pre-approved equal. Under water, it says water shares transfer will need to be approved and completed before construction starts. Then on other, a note requiring all missing, non-functioning or damaged surface improvements shall be replaced, sidewalk, curb and gutter fencing, et cetera. Current note is acceptable if you remove the during construction verbiage. And then he states that that shouldn't be a reason to hold up, um, a, a potential approval consideration at this time. He's comfortable with that. Uh, no other comments or concerns from police or fire or city administration. Um, Mr. Nelson, city engineer says, I herewith recommend engineering approval of the plat and improvement drawings and the calculations as submitted. We have received an engineer's cost estimate from the applicant. Mr. Nelson has reproved that engineer's cost estimate and he says, in my opinion, engineer's estimate escrow amount, including 10% warranty amount should be 446, 430,000 and he's comfortable with that recommendation. You have minutes from the planning commission showing that the motion and the, uh, approval for that motion from that body in their meeting on the 14th of April, an application thereafter, some engineering documentation showing the, uh, developers, engineers' efforts to resolve previous, um, concerns, again, that escrow amount, a letter from the, um, applicants regarding the high water table. It just says in regards to the requirement to address the high water table in said subdivision, we are planning on either slab on great homes or crawl spaces, should not have any issues with water. There are any homes that have basements, they must, then they must meet the requirements in the geotechnical report filed with the city. After that, then you have the plat and the supporting, uh, site plan documentation. And Mr. Park is on, uh, to, to answer any questions or items of concern as is other staff members and I would defer to the city council for any questions or comments that they may have, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Any questions for Mr. Park? It's like pretty easy for you, Hugh.
Well, thank you.
That's good. We appreciate this project and, uh, and what you designed here, so. Okay, with that, do we have a motion on ordinance, uh, 918 to approve the subdivision request for the Old Mill subdivision?
Mayor?
Yes?
Motion to approve ordinance 918 as stated in the packet with, uh, with, uh, the caveat that, uh, Mr. Douglas's concerns have to be resolved before the project begins. Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Mr. Arnold, uh, Ms. Stevens, would you pull the council on the ordinance, please?
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Ellis, is he back?
So we've got, uh, four in favor, uh, the motion passes. Let's move on to, uh, action item number three. Thank you, Hugh, for being with us tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate your help and your work. Looking to, uh, having a nice project in there, so.
We're looking forward to having one, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, move on to action item number three. This is consideration and action to cancel or modify our Glory's Day events and celebration. Uh, Mr. Brooks?
I'll, I'll start off on this and Rich can play where he needs to. Um, basically there just comes a point in time when we have to make decisions and we've reached that. Um, you know, when there's a lot of planning involved in a parade, booze and fireworks and things like that, so, um, we just wanted to bounce off the count and make sure you guys were aware of where we're at. Um, like I mentioned in the pre-planning meeting, there have been a few changes, but I don't think it's, it's significant enough for us to really alter our, our plans to, to recommend to the council that we just move forward and cancel everything. I think it's unfortunate, but it is what it is and we don't want to be in the position where we expose people to getting sick and, Rich, I don't know what, how much more you want to, you want to add to that, but I know Rich is, it's been really stressful for him and we put a lot of pressure on him because this stuff's been hanging and he's needed to make decisions and I keep telling him to wait and wait and wait. So, um, I appreciate Rich's patience with us, but you know, it's just the times that we live in and the situation we're in. So, Rich, you got anything you want to add to that?
The only thing I'd like to say is although things are looking better, um, for us, the, we were more in health department, I've been in touch with them and they still are not issuing mass gathering permits, which the parade, fireworks, any activities in the park would require, and they don't anticipate issuing those this summer. Um, so they didn't rule it out completely, but they said they don't anticipate issuing those. So that's the only other thing.
And further into that, uh, anything over 50, between 50 and 100, even though you go a little bit higher, then it throws a burden on us to control that and we just, we don't even want to go there. That, that's been making some of our decisions like with pavilions and stuff like that that we can't, uh, really control. So, um, those larger gatherings, anything over 50, we just, it's, it's almost impossible sometimes to control these things. So our position at this point is just keep things closed or cancel it and, uh, let the cards fall where they may.
You have anything, Rich, in addition to that?
Oh, unless there's questions, uh, from the mayor council.
Hey, hang on just a sec. Hey, Steve, is Cody still on with us?
Yes, he's in, in with Shelly there.
Okay, Brett got kicked out for some reason. He's trying to get back in and it just tells him he's not able to reconnect. It just says reconnecting, I think, but nothing's happening, so.
Okay. Shelly, did you hear all that?
Yeah, so Cody went upstairs. I'm gonna hurry and text him because I don't know if he's on right here. So I'll just text him what the mayor just said.
He was trying to call in and see if we could hook him up by phone, so I know he's working on it right now.
Was he?
Yeah.
Okay, so he'll try to call Councilor Ellis.
Right.
Okay, uh, we have a motion then to, uh, cancel or modify the whole Glory Days events for 2020. Okay, we have a motion then to cancel or modify the Old Glory Days events for 2020.
I'll call him. Do you have a cell phone number?
I don't. I do have my computer on, actually.
Hear me okay?
Okay, you don't give us something here. Rich, good luck, buddy. I don't know what to tell you.
Well, there's no way they can do those fireworks up Roamer, huh?
Well, I mean, doing it, yeah, we could, we could pull it off. And like I mentioned two weeks ago, you know, I've, I've got to have the backing of our police and fire department. They're just overly concerned. I, I know it was putting heavy burden on Scott and Jared, you know, he's got to protect that whole hillside and stuff, so. And, and I don't know what kind of participation we would get. I mean, there's a lot of ifs about that whole thing. So we kind of have backed off on that just for that reason, because without their support, I just don't feel comfortable moving forward on that.
Hey, Braden, I can answer that a little bit of a, probably one of my largest concerns of being a, shooting the fireworks up there is first of all, we're already have it marked as a no firework open flame zone for us in our city on that whole hillside. Second, I think because people aren't going to be allowed in that park, they're going to block 600 West, they're going to start blocking those roads up there. If we do get a fire on that hillside, we're not going to have emergency access. So that's, and we're doing also with the landslide, that road that used to be there below for access is no longer good for us. So we have to couple those problems.
And Scott was concerned about traffic issues even down below. So he's going to be split between up there and the terrace and, and down below here. And he just figured that the increase in that would, would tax him probably beyond what it, what they could handle, so.
Mayor?
Yes?
I'll, I'll make the unpopular motion to cancel. I originally was thinking about, you know, turning it over to staff with the, you know, risk management committee, but then that just throws it on them to continue to, to evaluate, get pressure from others and I, I think it's just important that we support the staff by making this call and living in the time that we are. I mean, we, we just need to make the tough decisions. So I, I would make a motion to cancel the festivities for Old Glory Days for the year 2020.
Second.
Thank you, Ellen. I support your motion. Thanks for the second also, Councilor Mitchell.
Just with regret, by the way.
Let's, okay, I have a motion to cancel Old Glory Days for 2021. We have a second. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Well, that wasn't very energetic. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, thank you. It's unanimous in favor.
Sir, Mayor, this is Bart. I, I said nay.
Mayor, if we could, I mean, Bart, I, I, I get your nay, but can we have some explanation of what you're, I mean, are you looking for anything particular or, I mean, just to say nay, I mean, to articulate what you're talking about, maybe we can look something out. That'd be great.
He voted nay. I will put it four in favor, one opposed.
My, my emphasis is not to cancel, but possibly postpone where applicable. And that's, and that's why I, I went with the nay to cancel. I would have preferred the word postpone.
Okay. For the record, thank you then. Okay. I think I mentioned in the works that all the other cities in the county have canceled with exception of Plain City and Ogden.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
And the website for Roy, it says, for their festivities of, of Roy Days, it says postponed until 2021. Now, that's a little euphemistic in a term postpone, but I would still like to have something in the summer of 2020 when it becomes optional as a feasible under the circumstances. And that's, and that's what my direction is. Now, will that happen? I don't know.
Well, things could change and maybe you can have some things that, you know, later movies in the park, things like that. Just have to play that by ear. So, okay then, did we cancel or did we postpone to 2021? What is your motion?
Well, the motion was canceled, but I, I just want to take the pressure off of the staff. I think if we postponed, we're going to be sitting there looking at the possibility of, okay, we postponed, what does that mean? And, and I think if we cancel it and then turn around and, because we can re-add anything as soon as the restrictions are lifted or anything like that, we, we can add anything back. But I, I think take the pressure off the staff to continually look at this without, you know, they're looking to the council, they're looking to the, you know, the health department, they're looking to the state. And I think we just cancel it and then if, you know, all of a sudden this goes away, then it'll be up to the council to reinstate it. Is, is my thought.
I agree with what you're saying. What I, what I said, maybe I don't know if you heard, but I said that was a postponed to 2021 next year. I wasn't suggesting that we look at it again for August or something like that, but we certainly can as, as time passes, so.
Well, the actual official motion was to cancel it for 2020, so.
Okay, let's, it's canceled for 2020 and that's the way it is in the record. That's what we asked. I think it's a good, good, at least for the time being, I think we're good, so.
Well, it, it changes. I don't think it even takes a council action for Rich to have it in the park or something, you know? I, I, I don't think that would take our, our authority really.
No, no, it wouldn't.
I can't.
I don't think any of those changes, leaving the fireworks is, part of that is, is we pay that in two payments kind of thing. So that's still on the table. Part of our fireworks fee this year has been paid and then part of Rich's negotiations is to try and push those into next year. So who knows what could happen, but at least at this point, it takes the pressure off of what's currently on the books, so.
I guess I keep trying to join the meeting, but it.
Uh, Mayor, sir, if I could add that, you know, it was brought out that, that the staff could make these decisions without coming back to the council. If we could maybe put that in to, you know, since the money's already been allocated in budget to have these things, if it becomes, if circumstances present themselves, I'd like to, to make sure that it doesn't need to come to the council because that just delays it and, and so that the planning for an event can be initiated in this, in this season, you know, in this warm, this summer, it could be initiated by the staff without it to come to the, the council.
I think, I think the only reason it's before the council, just because of the magnitude of the decision, how many, all the people it affects, so. I agree. I, I think we're good with it.
Hey, Mayor?
Yeah.
So Councilmember Ellis is on the phone. So he is here, but I have him on the phone over here, so.
I'm here. I just can't see you.
Can you hear him?
I can see him. I can hear him, I'm sorry.
Perfect, okay.
We, Cody tied him into that little call-in thing that we use, so he's present on that by, by voice only, but he can't hear us and we can hear him now or Shelly can relay what, what he's saying, so.
Okay, super good. I think just one item on the fireworks, right, Steve? Jared, he said that though that payment could go toward next year's, at least part of it, like I understood.
Yeah, that Rich is talking to him about that, but it looked like that they were going to work with us a little bit on that. And that's the one thing is we move into the new budget here in not too long, so. But obviously all that stuff would be included for the new year, but yeah, he was, he was going to try and work with us. If Rich could give us a little bit more details on that, I don't know if that is finalized, but I know he was talking to him about that, so.
All right. Thank you. Let's. It's not rich, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to add that in speaking with the firework provider, he is wanting to have a long-term relationship with us. He did mention that if everybody cancels his events and nobody's, has him shoot a show, that he will need to pay for his insurance premium and a portion of our money will be lost if we don't shoot this year, but he is happy to take the rest of it and roll it into a future event at any time in the future. And so we are getting a pretty good deal there and wouldn't be losing out too much money.
Okay, let's just watch through the summer, see what happens, see if there is an option later to, to do something, go that other direction, so. Okay, move on to action item number four. This is consideration open Ritter Drive to two-way traffic at the west end following completion of the phase two upgrade project. Mr. Brooks?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I would note too, if you didn't notice, that Sean is present with us. He's listed as Cody Carter. He lost connection with us earlier during the public comments and so he actually drove back into the building. He's up in Cody's office, so probably a good resource to give us some, some background and information on that. But again, this is not anything that's new. This, the whole history of this thing has been just crazy from the get-go and I, I'm showing the date of May 4th in 2010. This was closed by a four-to-one council vote. There was no ordinance or resolution. It was just action by the council. It's remained that way since and for the past two years in two different phases, we've, we've done some improvements there and it's got to the point now where we have to make some decisions on what we're going to do because they've got to finish the west end based upon what that decision is. And so Sean's been pushing hard to get this done so we can kind of give them some direction. So that's where we're at. Had it in here two weeks for, for some comments and, and direction from you guys about what we want to do. And I don't know if you have questions for Sean. I know Scott's also got a little bit as far as the speed and stuff. And again, you know, we can debate all those things extensively, but, but that's where we're at. We've got the people here. If you have questions or whatever you want to ask, we, we need a decision, so.
You have any questions for Steve or Sean or Scott?
That's true.
Arnold, were you waving? I couldn't tell. Kind of dark there.
Uh, Mayor, Cheryl?
Yeah?
Uh, this is Bart. If I could ask Sean Douglas, if you would, what's the plans right now for the contractor? How is the, what, what was the plans that we, the city gave the, the contractor as to how the connection to each, or three-way park drive is supposed to be set as it is right now? If they follow the plans as we've given them?
So is, I think most, most of you have been on the council the whole time. For the last two years, we've been showing that as an open road when phase two was done. When the plans have been brought in and approved and the, you know, the budget for that approved, it's always shown that as being an opening. So if they continue right now with the contract they have and going on the plans that they have, it'll be just an open end, just like a normal road there. If you decide to do something different there, then we will have to go back and do a change order to change that in some way, manipulate that to where it goes back to a closed deal. What was there previously was always supposed to be temporary. It was never a good design. It was just, you know, that small road closed sign. And I don't think there was ever a plan to leave that for as long as it had been, you know? And in the past, the questions have always been, well, we can't walk safely on the side of the street. We don't have curb and gutter, all of those type of things. And I think we've addressed all of them issues. I mean, every road, the people that live on have a concern about speeding and, you know, my road, I was saying there are speeders on it too. That's something that we'll work on. We, we propose putting some more of the indicator signs like we have at the bottom. They seem to be working well. I mean, at the place we have them, I think they're trying to put one or two more of them up there to help with the speed. As far as the traffic, I don't know what you'll end up with for traffic up there, you know? That's anybody's guess. You're going to have some more, but I think the traffic can just self-regulates itself. You know, if you look at 4400 South, prior to Riverdale Road being reconstructed, the numbers on 4400 South was higher. When I redid Riverdale Road and took some of the congestion on it, the numbers on 4400 South dropped. So what we're in to do, I don't know, because we've made all them changes in between. But the design right now that you've seen and that you've been presented with for the past two years has been open end when the project was done.
Any other questions, comments?
Mayor?
Mr. Ellis and Mr. Arnold?
I, I think when I've talked to the people over there, the traffic is, isn't as much a concern as safety, speeding, people not looking out. So I think if we could possibly increase law enforcement, especially when we open up the road, just to see if that would help, because I know that they have a lot of concerns. Even with the road closed now, all we hear is testimonials about how they almost got killed or almost got hit. So I, I think we're, we're more concerned about public safety than the other of opening their, the increased traffic.
Mr. Arnold?
Um, I just got some stuff. I'll try and hurry through it as much as possible, as fast as possible, but that there's been a couple of comments in the last meeting and this meeting that this was never supposed to be a permanent fix. And actually, in, it was either November or December of 2019, the council that had, I believe Dave Gibby, Gary Griffiths, Doug Peterson, maybe Shelley Jenkins and whoever else was on there, maybe Don Hekt. They, they actually closed Ritter Drive. They, they did the, some traffic studies, they had numbers on that. They actually closed Ritter Drive. The action that was taken by the council that the mayor and I were a part of in May of 2010 was to open it to this current configuration. And it was a four-to-one vote and I was the one descending vote because I, I felt it should be open at that time. The one thing that I've learned in these 10 years is that I, I get my vote back then, but it worked and it worked well. Currently, it's configured to be open both ways, but we have it. You know, Sean was able to put the measures in place and I think it still should be configured to be open because we don't have the money to keep changing things back and forth. And I think as you was talking about, we don't know what we're going to have to do in '25 when that road becomes a change again. And then also that covers, so Ritter Drive, its current configuration's been 10 years and it's worked really well. We've talked about the safety, I'm not going to go into the, the safety concerns again, they are real. The topography and the line of sight with the sun and everything in, at Ritter Drive is a definite concern. It can't be compared to any other road when, like for example, there's, there's two families, the Tesh family and Trubus, Port Trubus's home. If you take a drive past that and just look at their, go to speed limit like I did, tomorrow's garbage day, so you'll be able to see the garbage cans, it'll be sticking out in the front of the driveway. Go around either direction for the Trubus or the Tesh's home, you have, at, at the current speed limit, you have two seconds to get from where you can see their garbage cans till you actually get there, till you hit their driveway. That's in optimal conditions where it's May, great weather. Again, concerns about the winter, which is, it, you, Ritter Drive actually gets closed sometimes, very rarely closed, but that, the hills and everything, the, the banking that they talked about, the Lenders home, which used to be Gary Griffiths's home, has actually been hit with no changes. The, the improvements have not changed anything at, at their house. Those improvements were done in 1998 or something like that, when the subdivision, my subdivision was actually put in. And they've lost their fence twice. They had a car totaled that was for sale on the corner. They've had their house actually hit where that gas meter is. And I've told them, you know, if this opens, then they need to put up a Jersey barrier or something right there because it, it is a very dangerous corner. And then if you put, there, there's an autistic child on the corner of Coleman Lane and Ritter Drive now, we put that, we approved that. Um, we put that, we approved that subdivision to go in there. Um, people did come in, you know, evaluating the area when they bought their homes. And that should be evaluated. The, the line of sight issue can't be fixed with that locked curb and gutter. We also on the, the east end, if you turn going up to 50 up Ritter, it's, it's, they don't even have a park strip. It's a, a curb and gutter sidewalk combination. So the sidewalk is right along the gutter and the curb. So, I mean, it's, it's really kind of a tricky thing there that I'm hoping that the roundabout will actually alleviate. So we're talking 2022 for a roundabout, 2025-ish or whatever for changes up at the, at the West End that are, that are necessary. Um, I had an opportunity to speak with about 50, or at least 50 people I, I spoke with. And there's a lot of, um, talk that I've heard, rumors, that people have said that it's 10 to one of people that want it open versus people that want it closed. And that is not true. I, I haven't, out of all the people that I talked to, and I, I tried to go off of Ritter Drive as well as being on Ritter Drive and a few blocks in, like four blocks in. If I got past four blocks, the people there didn't care because they didn't use Ritter Drive. They went down to 1050 or 1150 for the people up that are south of me. But almost every, almost everybody, it was in the high 90 percentile of people that want it open. There, it's not 10 to one. It's, it's probably 25 to one of people that want it closed. And the thing is, there's no economic benefit. Prior to the pandemic, you know, COVID-19, COVID-19 issue that we ran into, Riverdale had its own, or the highest self-tax revenue month ever. And so this isn't a valuable corridor to bring people in and out of Riverdale. This is, does nothing but have people say, you know what? I don't wanna use Riverdale Road. I'm gonna shoot the back way. And, cause it seems, it's nice. It, it seems nice. It's, it seems less than Riverdale Road. Riverdale Road was actually designed for traffic where Ritter Drive is not, even with the improvements that we have. And the, the accidents that causes, so Deanna Dixon and Janet DeYoung, both were in accidents at Freeway Park Drive and Ritter because they were making a left that someone was making the right. They, someone, Freeway Park Drive headed north, turning on Ritter Drive. And so they made their, their turn left and the person behind the person turning on the River Drive, Ritter Drive, actually skirted out and went around the, the person and, and hit them. Uh, both of them were in accidents like that. Um, we've done nothing to, to enhance that or anything like that. But opening that, we do have the numbers. They're just, they're, I mean, they're 10, 12 years old. You've seen 3,500 cars a day were the numbers that I remember. And that was a long time ago, but, um, we've increased population. That once the thing gets found out, um, Rogers actually made a comment to me that he would like to go home that way. And when people find it out, people not wanna go home that way because it's, it's so congested there that you actually feel pressure to hurry and try and shoot through there. Freeway Park Drive gets so much traffic. And then you get backed up on Ritter Drive, then you, you shoot the gap. Um, that's why the council in 2009 actually voted to close it. They, I mean, they, they were talking about making it into a cul-de-sac. And, you know, I'm thankful that they did do that. And I'm thankful that Ken Reed actually came up with the one-way idea because it works for what we're trying to do. And I, I don't think, I appreciate what, uh, Councilman Ellis said about the police, but you can't police compliance all the time. We, I mean, if you look at our police report, we really don't have the police force to be handling Ritter Drive traffic. You know, the new electronic, uh, Harleys, they love Ritter Drive. To test drive the new electronic Harleys, they're, they're a bad machine and they blow through there. You know, I'd like to see the police get them. But, you know, with the, the people that are on Ritter Drive, it, it's an amazing road that really affects those people. Anybody off, even myself, I mean, I can go around. But the people that are on other driveways have just seconds to make a decision, even in good times. So, um, you know, I, I really, you know, I won't belabor the situation. But the fact is, there is no need whatsoever to open Ritter Drive. We spent the money to improve. Um, it's nice to have the sidewalks. People still walk in the road and they don't like it on the sidewalk. We paid to put those there. But the, the problem is we increased the speed as well. It's a, we've added to a problem. And to do it without any numbers, just to say, hey, we're gonna throw this on the residents because we don't know. Um, it doesn't affect anyone, uh, on this meeting. You know, everybody else, they don't drive Ritter, they don't deal with Ritter. Um, the, the people that I talked to, like I said, not one person said. And I would, I would, I mean, I'd be willing to table this for the evening and, and get people to actually do a public hearing or, um, I wanna find those people. That, um, we had one guy that was really strong against, or about opening it, really vocal. And he has moved it from Riverdale. So I would ask that we either table it and do some due diligence, um, rather than just to change it or leave it how it is, wait until the roads close. Um, need two Jersey barriers or something, just like John's done. He's, he's done it for 10 years. Wind molding, you know, was there when they set it up. There's, there's not a, a, you know, Roger wasn't here, Mike wasn't here when this was set up. And, and to change it, it's, it's something that's gonna be very, very difficult to change back. So I would hope that we would, if it is, support the residents that are in the area that are dealing with this. The one, I, I can't remember the name. I think it was, uh, Melissa Carey. Um, I talked to her and her husband, Jason's dad, I don't know if they're married, but they have eight kids and they live on that road. They have a really steep driveway now because of the improvements that were made. And I, I, when I was talking to him, I, I said, are you running a daycare? And they said, no, we just, it's a blended family. They've got four kids. We've got four kids. So eight kids together. Um, it, it really is an amazing situation with the sun, the topography and the line of sight issues. And I would, I would hope that people would just make a decision based on what they think that they heard 10 years ago or, or whatever it is. So I won't belabor the situation, but it's, it really is no need to open this. Plus we got the I-15, the roundabout and the assisted looking facility as we come up and we actually can do some really good numbers before we inflict this upon our residents. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Mr. Mitchell?
So, um, I, I was the one that made the comment about, uh, the residents I talked to, and this was a long time ago, uh, when, when it was such a, such a heavy group that leaning towards opening it. Um, and I have to admit that tonight, um, you know, hearing, hearing this group of residents, uh, they were obviously all in favor of keeping it closed. Um, I've spent a lot of time, uh, trying to compare Ritter to other roads, uh, the past week or two. I went over and spent some time on Bird Street Drive in South Ogden because it's got some topography and some curves to it. Um, I spent about an hour talking to Mike Davis, uh, one night about Ritter. I, I went up into the terrace, uh, kind of the Riverdale area, our east bench, uh, checking on some of those roads with some topography and some curves. And I, I, I'm really torn because, uh, I think it's hard to keep a road closed, um, for just a certain group of residents. And, and it's hard for me to say whether it really warrants it with the safety issue or not. I mean, uh, it's hard to draw the line if someone else asks to have their road closed. I mean, it, it's a hard issue, but at the same time, no one has come out, uh, in support of opening it. And, and I think it was John Anderson that talked about the Riverdale residents. And, and that really is who I'm concerned about first, is the Riverdale residents. Um, and so, I don't know, someone said there's some polling data or some sort of survey that maybe was done. Uh, I'd be real interested to know what the residents think. And, and, I mean, obviously Alan and his family would like it closed. And it sounds like he's been, you know, over talking to people a little bit. Uh, and I'm not sure if the other residents in the area know that we were discussing this, uh, tonight. And I'd like to give them an opportunity to comment. I'm, I'm fine with tabling it. I'm fine with finishing it, uh, with it, with it, the way the plans show. And then you could throw a couple of Jersey barriers up. Um, I mean, I, I'm impressed with the residents tonight that, that were passionate enough to come out and voice their concerns. And, uh, I didn't hear a single person come out in favor of opening it. And so, so that's kinda where I stand on it.
Any other comments, discussion?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
So I'm probably the council member that has most recently been through that neighborhood and, and really just asking for vote. Uh, part of that, asking for what can I do for you as a citizen? Uh, to go to them, uh, directing a question specifically about Ritter Drive, but instead more asking, uh, what's on their mind? And, um, my experience is similar to what Counselor Mitchell's experience was, and I believe, uh, Counselor Stevens. And that is, uh, the unsolicited comments were literally 10 to one. I don't think that's that far off of people that just spontaneously asked me to get Ritter Drive open. So, uh, I don't know, I don't care, like Councilman Mitchell, Mitchell said. I don't care about the folks in Roy and the folks in South Weber. That is not what we're doing here. I don't think that about the problem. I think I'm trying to solve is respond to the majority of voters as I perceive them. Uh, and, and give them access to, to go east or west as their hearts desire. That, that the prevailing comments over there were frustration that some respected families were able to get that closed without really ever consulting the rest of the neighborhood. So I, I spent a couple hours over there Saturday with Mike Davis as well. Uh, I, I saw all the issues that he's concerned about. I, I note for the record that the sunlight problem is an eastbound problem. That's not gonna change if we open Ritter Drive. I note that most of these problems are, they're speaking to. And I also agree with Counselor Mitchell that the folks that spoke today I have great empathy with. I, I think they did a phenomenal job of expressing themselves. But the problems they're expressing are all law issues with those that are violating the law. So I, I think we, we can't make a decision about road open and close based on the, the lack of attention that we've given that area from law enforcement. Uh, I think there needs to be some tickets issue, issued. I've mentioned before that Parker Drive, um, this, this place seemed to find a lot of time to sit and run radar on Parker Drive. I'd be happy to give the Ritter folks some of the, the speed enforcement time on Parker because they're always making me slam on my brakes. Um, I think that they, we do need to support some of the folks that live on Ritter Drive with some speed enforcement. And I think we also need to approach the, uh, the motorcycle dealership up there and ask them, uh, and perhaps, uh, ask them forcefully to, uh, to, please don't refer their, their customers to test drive up and down Ritter Drive. Cause that's real. All of those concerns are real. But they're, they're all there now. Now, in theory, by opening this up, you're gonna get a lot more eastbound, westbound. And I, I agree with that. In fact, let's say it doubles. Let's say it triples. The actual more that it loads up, the more speed enforcement it's going to self-create, in my opinion. And the other issue I wanted to mention is that we, we haven't done anything with speed mitigation, traffic flow mitigation over on that road. And I think that if we open that road up tonight, we definitely need to include in our, in our thinking, uh, the, a commitment to budget some, some new LED signs for Ritter and make that happen this summer. And we also need to, to budget for the next year's budget, that bike lanes and whatever we can do to help these folks out with, with their speed enforcement. Thanks.
The, I know there's a plan for bike lanes. I know Sean's looking. He held off on phase one because he wanted to get phase two done and do it all at once. But, uh, I know there's traffic studies. I've been to some seminars in Salt Lake. And, uh, uh, when you put in bike lanes, you make the lanes narrower. And it's proven fact that when the lanes are narrower, that it helps slow the traffic down. So I know that's something, uh, you know, and Sean and Steve Hilton both mentioned, uh, the electronic signs. But I, uh, I really believe, I don't know what your plan is, Sean, on the bike lanes. I think you told me that the road width doesn't allow for bike lanes on one side. You could only be a bike lane on one side and parking lane on the other side. Is that correct?
No, I, we could do, I, 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 I think the previous measurements said we can do them on both sides. We just can't have parking on the street if you have a full bike lane. That doesn't mean that we can't put a white line and have a multi-use on the side. It's not a totally designated bike lane. We can choke down the white line, bring it in and have a wider shoulder over there that bicyclists could use. And you could still use for parking. But I think if you do go with full bike lanes both ways, you're gonna need to restrict the parking on, on Ritter Drive to no parking to accommodate both lanes.
Just talking to residents, I talked to Mike Davis for about an hour and a half on Saturday. And we talked and I know they do desire some parking along that road. So I don't know if you could, I think the staff should decide this and, uh,
We can, we can put the white lines in, Mayor. The, so what, what you're referring to with the bike lanes is as you narrow the line down, that white line comes in. I mean, it feels more confined. So it typically has people wanna slow down because they feel like they have to drive slower to stay between the lines. We can do that with a single line or with a bike line and still have the bicyclers go outside of that white line and should get about the same effect and still allow parking.
Yeah.
And that's a plan that we can bring back to you. You know, we'll be doing painting up there. But we can also do, we plan on doing a chip seal right after this is all done and cover both that up. We could look at that and get the council's thoughts on whether they wanna full bike lane or if they just wanna modified bike lane with the shoulder marker that's in closer to the center to help slow the traffic down. But them are all things we could do in, in next year fairly easy.
Those are all good suggestions. I just encourage, I think the staff can work that. If you wanna bring it back to the council, you can. I mean, you surely can do that, but I, uh, uh, maybe the council wants it to come back. But I, I think time is the essence. I think it's important. That is a traffic calming measure, uh, whether they're bike lanes or just the stripe. It still makes the lanes narrower. And, uh, from what I, my experience and meetings I've been in, that, that it does make a difference. So I would encourage that to happen. I would also encourage the council to make a decision this evening, if possible, that they don't table it. Uh, mainly for Sean Douglas's benefit. He's gotta come up with some direction for this construction company. And, uh, you're just gonna leave him hanging again. Maybe you'll end up putting a sign up there for the next 10 years. I don't think that's the right way to do it. So we had this on the agenda last time and we weren't able to vote on it because, uh, technicality on the wording. But, uh, if you can, I, I know these aren't easy decisions, but I would sure encourage you to make, uh, make a decision and kinda get Sean out of the woods because he's kinda pleaded a couple times to help him to know what to do. I know he wants to think that July 31st, they're looking for a completion date. I would, I would encourage you to give him some direction so he knows which way to go with it, if you can do that.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I, I think, I mean, the, the direction for Sean is, is in the plans. I think, uh, Councilmember Stevens and Mitchell both said, you know, we, we, I, I'm not asking for a change order at all in the plans. The, the contractors in, they're doing what they should be doing. They, they can put it in so it's open or it can be open. Uh, by putting the Jersey barriers in there, one of, one of the things that should be, I mean, it's incumbent upon us to do this, not, not police things in it, not trying to, um, not trying to add bike lanes later. We can do all that. We can leave the road exactly how it is, finish it out with the contractor, put the clothes, get the traffic calming measures, take some data. We, the 2009 council made decisions with data. We have nothing. I mean, superficial numbers from a couple of months when it's closed. We open it, we create technical, it's, the horse is out of the barn. And I think by saying it tonight, Sean should, should go about what he's doing, get it finished, keep it closed, get the traffic calming measures put in, not in next year's budget, but the residents, one of the things that I, I was, I was even surprised that, I would challenge Councilmember Hilton's assertion of the 10 to 1, because I, I did not target, I didn't, you know, look for people. My mindset, I wanted to know what people, I didn't, I already knew what Mike Davis thought. I've been in contact with Mike Davis and several people, but I went, I met many people, honestly, that I've never known before, people that have moved in in the last 10 years, and they were shocked. And I was shocked that I found two people, out of all the people that I talked to, I found two people that wanted it open. And one was Scott Williams that, that spoke today, because I said, what do you think about that? And he said, yeah, that's, that's a silly thing up there. But then I explained what it meant. And he's like, oh, heck yeah. I'm, I'm going to talk to him for the council. So, you know, the decision is easy for Sean. He just, he just keeps going with what he's doing. When we, if we have the traffic calming measures, when we have the traffic calming measures, and we put in a couple of the data collection things, one at the top, one at the bottom, to actually get some data, and then compare it to the old data that was there, I think with the population that's increased, the people that have moved in there, I mean, I think there was Leah Hanson, who I didn't talk to at all, that talked about she moved into the new subdivision, and her daughter was buying the one on the corner of 1500 and Ritter Drive. They're buying their homes now based on what Ritter Drive is, and say that we need to open it because we put this money into it. And I mean, I, I honestly wouldn't do this to you on your road. You know, each one of the council members, I mean, I've thought a lot about where each of us live, and none of us deal with this like they do, except for Brent. Councilmember Ellis, that corner.
Definitely.
What's that?
You should have the credit union and all that FedEx trucks go by you every day. Takes me 10 minutes sometimes to get out of my driveway.
Absolutely. And the thing is, you don't have a son, the kids, the thing like that. I did not, the 10 to 1 does not exist. And I'm pleading with you to, you can bring this up later. Vote it to keep it open. Keep Sean happy. He can continue on with what he's doing. And then let's look at it. Last several years, I mean, Brent knows this probably better than anybody. I've tried to get Ritter Drive on the agenda. I'm not trying to open it. I'm trying to plan. This, this, you know, because we put it on the agenda, because this is the end of July, we still have six weeks before the, or actually 10 weeks before the end of July, to actually do some data collecting. And then we should even do some data collecting at the top side of Ritter as well. Get the old, Steve, I saw Steve writing down a note to look up the notes from the 2009 era, and to get us the information to make a decided decision without saying, you know, I want to talk to people. I want to find the ones that say I want to open it and say why, and understand what they're saying, because I don't see it. I haven't been able to talk to anybody else since then. So, I mean, I'm asking you on behalf of the local residents of Ritter Drive to at least extend this until we can properly open it, properly mark it, talk to the people in the area. And most of them haven't been here 10 years. They're shocked at what this is happening, and to try and push this certain way with no information is just a travesty. So, I promise I won't take one night.
Any more comments, any additional comments? With that, do we have a motion?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to add a couple of things. The, what I heard was a lot of anecdotal observations used as statistics. They're anecdotal, whether it's 10 to 1, or 25 to 1, or increase the traffic by 500%. It's, it's not empirical data. It's anecdotal. It's your, somebody's opinion, assessment based on their limited observation. You know, you really, I kind of get turned off a little bit when I, when I hear these facts and figures being thrown around, when they're, they're not, they're not based in any type of organized, structured, scientific, whatever term you want to use it, to collect the data. And so it's not really, I don't find it viable personally. Excuse me a second. That said, I really think that should continue with the plans as Mr. Douglas received it. Now, I've been on the council maybe two and a half years, and like Mr. Douglas said, we've been working with these plans and the budgeting for it for two years. And then, two weeks ago at council meeting, all of a sudden, there's all this opposition, and I just, I just found, I'm going, where does this come from? Because we've been kind of in a low-key way through the budget process and the planning process, working towards this improvement for two years, actually a little more than two years. And so to all of a sudden have all of this come about and say, oh, you know, we need, you can't make a rush, whatever, is not really viable. We need to continue with it. Now, it's not going to open feasibly until August, not be available to be used as a, as a two-way from the frontage road. And so there is time to have, you know, do surveys, do whatever needs to be happening between now and August 1st or the end of July, however you want to phrase it. But the plans that Mr. Douglas gave to the contractor need to continue. And that's all. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? With that, do we have a motion on action item four?
I make a motion. I would move to keep Ritter Drive in the same configuration that it's in, directing Mr. Douglas to continue to open it and then collect the data, to actually create some hard numbers that either would support or refute claims of our residents, but not make a decision to open it both ways at this time, pending further numbers, as Councilor Stevens says, to actually have something further than the anecdotal residents, but the, because we have no hard numbers to support either way. So, so I'm making the motion to continue on the construction project, but to keep it closed, pending a collection of data and review of the 2009 data that was there for, to give us the numbers that happened prior to the closing of Ritter Drive in the first place.
Remember, a lot of the 2009 data was back when Riverdale Rockets being reconstructed. People were detouring all over the place, too. Just, just something, not to start any additional.
That's not true.
That it was different things.
That's, that's not true. The, the Ritter Drive was actually routed through prior to that, but the data was about how many cars were there. That, that's why we need to look at the data. I mean, we will have all those numbers, but right now, as Councilor Stevens was talking about, we have less data on the side of opening it. There is no data on the side of opening. There's, we have that data. We just, we just need to get the data given to it, that we can say, this is what Ritter Drive was, this is what it is, this is what it should be, you know, based on what's coming. There's, there's no reason to change the construction documents or plans with what we're doing, but to make a rash decision with no data to open it is a problem.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second to the motion? Motion dies for lack of a second. Mr. Mitchell.
I would move to just table this and tell Sean Douglas to continue on. We've, we've approved those plans. We've approved the budget for it. And I'd say we just table this opening of Ritter Drive until we have more data.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second to the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Going to have Ms. Stevens do a roll call vote on this. Do a roll call vote.
Yes.
Please.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Ellis?
Aye.
Was that a, I didn't get that.
That's a no.
Okay.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnold?
Aye.
It's for in favor, one opposed. The action items then tabled, the motion carries. Let's move on to discretionary business. Let me ask, is there any other additional public comment? Ms. Stevens, there's.
I had two emails. Do you want me to read them?
Sure.
Okay, hold on. I'm going to pull it up on my phone. Okay, so this one is from Darcy Powell. I have been a Riverdale resident for the past 11 years. Just recently purchased a home in the new Coleman Farms, and we are excited to live at 5253 South, 1250 West, on the corner of Ritter Drive and 1250 West. We were concerned about living on the corner and have yet to put up our complete fencing. We have a six-year-old son with autism, and he does not, he does run away from me and from, from me from time to time. He has been good about staying on the sidewalk, but I fear one day he will run into the road not understanding the consequence, and something tragic will happen. Traffic coming east and west on Ritter is not only steady, but speeds are increasing. I fear opening the road will only increase this, and I fear for not only my son, but the families and other children walking on the sidewalks. Please take children and families into consideration. And then, this one is from Stacy Davis. Here are my concerns and thoughts. I would like to express the thoughts and concerns of Ritter Drive since I have lived here my whole life. I would love to know the numbers of cars that are metered on Ritter Drive, and I understand the average speed as per the Jeep is 34 miles per hour, with the speed limit being set at 25 miles per hour. That proves to you that cars are speeding up and down the road daily. We never see any patrolling of this road until a week ago. Living close to the end of the road, it makes it very hard to enter the drive, enter your drive and worse backing up. By opening Ritter, this only allows for the situation to become worse. There is talk about a roundabout located at Ritter and 1050. Have you thought about summer nights in the motor view? We have a number of cars stop in front of our house to prepare to enter the drive-in. They not only are backed up on Ritter, but also on South Weber Drive. How is that going to affect the roundabout? I feel you are more concerned about people traveling through our neighbor, neighborhood, and making it convenient for them, and forgetting about the people who live right here. I would hope you would consider the speeds traveled and on this street. I understand I cannot stop progress, but we do need to remember the people who have lived and enjoyed Riverdale all their lives. Please do not forget us and our families when you make this decision. And that's all I have.
Okay, Rich, did you have anything?
I have one additional text. It's from Jenna DeYoung, 1326 West, 5400 South, and it says, we vote no. And that was all.
Okay. Sounds good. Let's move on to discretionary items. Any discretionary items for?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
All right. We took a vote on the Ritter Drive, but it, so what's the next step? Can there be a plan by our next council meeting, a plan from the staff as to how to proceed? Because come July 1, are we going to be facing this exact same conversation again? I'm sorry, August 1st, are we going to say, say this conversation? Are we going to have any data? Or is it going to be polling? Now, is there a chance that we can do a polling of Riverdale South Side area, some of these types of things? Can we kind of workshop some ideas on how to compile some, some legitimate data? And if we could discuss that for next meeting, please. Thank you.
Okay, we'll have the staff take a look at it. I think they're, where this is tabled, they're looking for some direction. But I know we did surveys back, four was made one way before. I think it, I think they did, didn't, Alan, didn't they do the south side? And they did the north side, too, didn't they? Didn't they seem like, or maybe it was all south? I don't remember for sure.
Yeah, I don't remember, I don't remember any polling data where they actually talked to people. They, they did have a, a town hall public hearing that didn't go very well. It, I mean, it was hostile on both sides. So I, I don't think, I know there was data from the traffic, whatever, whatever they call the speed limit sign that collects the data. There was quite a bit of data with that, but as far as, you know, talking to people and what do you think, it was just a naff fight.
Yeah, I know they did that survey, and I don't remember if it was just done at the town hall. It seemed like they might have, could have did it online, but I don't remember. I'd have to go back and read the stuff. Let's take a look. Okay, tabled.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
This is Sean. So I guess my question is, what data are you looking for? I mean, what do you really want to see? With the lane closed, I can't give you data on what the traffic would be up there. I mean, there's no way for me to monitor that and put a traffic strip down. That, there's no way to know that data. So what data is it that we're actually looking for so that I can try and put something together to, to see how we can gather the data that you want? What do, what do we really want?
I know what the residents want up there. I mean, really, it's been pretty convincing to me to hear people off of Ritter saying that they don't want it open. That was not my experience when I campaigned up there. Everybody on Ritter wanted it closed. Everybody off it wanted it open, but that hasn't really been the case tonight. We've got a lot of people that have moved in that did not live there, were in previous surveys. So I don't know if we have any extra rec workers, or if we can use some technology, whether it's phone or online, to kind of gather some data of what the people up there actually want.
Mayor, I, I probably would be, would add to Councilor Mitchell's comments. We probably ought to know what the city wants, because you're going to have some folks that work on base that are going to have an opinion that ought to be considered. Maybe we divide the survey in half and know what each side wants, but it doesn't seem fair to just let the south side decide this.
All right, let us, let us take a look at it.
If I could just inject a couple of real quick thoughts here before we move on, off this topic. And that is, as Sean brings up, a really valid point. If, in the big picture, because we've lived with it, or the people, residents have lived with the situation for 10 years, you've become accustomed to it. Now, there's nothing that says that. Now, there's nothing that says that if that was opened up, there would be some minor changes and people and time would become accustomed to whatever the changes are. Now, there's a certain resistance to change, and when, the longer you have something, the more that becomes the norm. So if it's been there for 10 years, there is a, um, compliance to the, whatever the norm is. The norm is, is how it's configured right now. Well, you're not going to know what is going to, what's better and what's more viable until you open it up, and especially with the improvements, to actually get the data and get people to, who live there to possibly use it and to be able to make those, uh, um, westbound turns onto Ritter from, from the Furnish Road. And, and that's not going to happen. You're not going to get a real good survey until you have three to six months or a year or two to actually utilize it. And so, to start collecting data of opinions now is not, it's going to be very skewed, because it's, it's obviously going to be to stay what the norm is, and the norm is what's been happening for 10 years. And, and same with, um, the speed limits and the, and the, those things. You can do it before it opens and after it opens, and you can have some comparisons of what the you suggest. And so, you know, really, it needs to open to get a real viable, true comparison. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Good comment.
Mayor.
Go ahead, Chief.
Just one other comment, and it was along the lines of Sean and what Councilmember Stevens was just saying. I, I don't understand how we can get data without it being open. There's, there's no comparison there. Uh, the only way you get a true picture is to have it open and see what the difference is on, uh, traffic counts and speed. So, as the whole discussion was going on, that was the one thought I had in my mind. Keep it closed. You can do all the studies you want. It's not going to give you an accurate picture.
Thank you, Chief. I agree with you.
Mayor.
Go ahead, Alan.
One of the things, I mean, I've said this a couple of times, but there is data from 2009 of car counts that you'll see that the difference between, th- these are actually car, and we can look at what, you know, did versus, you know, when, when the, um, construction was going on the Riverdale Road, so we can actually get that data, but the data exists from when it was open. And, and the council in 2009 didn't just willy-nilly this thing. It, it was a, it was a battle of sorts to collect data, to talk to residents, to do the things that we're talking about, but that data exists. It didn't go away. Um, there, it's in the meeting minutes. When I was running for office in 2009, I mean, I was reading those, those packets. They weren't on light. They're, uh, you know, they were delivered. And the thing is, the data before it closed exists. And, and I think grabbing that data gives somewhat of a snapshot. If you say, you know, what it looked like before 2009, looked at it, even, even the case in 2010 with the four to one vote to open it in configuration that we did, um, you know, you were a part of that, and we had the data there to, to make a change based on an idea that we had from a resident to, to try something. So, I mean, to, to say that we don't have that is, is just incorrect. I mean, it's 10 years old, but it's better than, we, we opened Ritter Drive. We will not be able to close it. It was a mess to close it. And there's, like I said, there's, there's no economic need whatsoever for Riverdale to, to open Ritter. But, you know, I'm, I'm great with, you know, let's, let's poll the residents. Let's look at financial numbers, what, what the data is that show, you know, our economic picture, or, you know, where, where do we want people to go? Because that's one of the things that we do do is, is funnel people to where we want to go. And UDOT, that's, that was UDOT's, uh, big push for Riverdale Road when they did that is funnel the, they wanted to funnel the people to Riverdale. And I think we do economically. I think that's what we want.
No, I agree. Uh, I agree with Chief Frankman, uh, and Bart. I, I really think you need current data, not that it's 10 years old, and there's a lot of other things going on. Uh, this, this is something that, uh, uh, there's been a lot of changes made there, both with businesses, subdivisions. There's just a lot of things different, and I really agree that you really have to, you need to have that, uh, those calming measures put in there and, and use it for a while and see what it does, what kind of data you really get. I really think what we're doing, I think by tableing this, I think we're, we're going right back to where we were about 12 years ago, and, and this is just going to be a, just be a quite a, quite a thing for its overgrowth. So, I, I, it's okay, we'll just have to deal with it, but as far as deciding what tonight, I think the decision's made and that's tabled, so we'll go ahead and regroup and decide which way to go from there, so. Any other comments? I shouldn't ask that question. Uh, move on to, uh, we still on discretionary. Is there anything else? Bart, you brought that one up.
Mayor.
Go ahead, Steve.
I, I was just gonna, because I know some of you have been getting hit up about this. Um, actually, beginning tomorrow, we are starting to reopen, I guess, so to speak. We'll go back to the phase we were at, at least in this building here and the core. It'll be limited hours. This is just to give you information, because I know you guys are getting hit up on this. One of the things we were concerned about is the trail is getting used like no other. And I was afraid by opening up this building that we would be getting bombarded with people who want to use bathrooms, water and all that kind of stuff. Uh, but beginning tomorrow morning, Sean's guys will be hitting the bathrooms and, and both the trail bathrooms and the park bathrooms will be open starting tomorrow. Um, having decided that, this building again will be open, uh, 10 to 3, like we had before with appointments outside of that. So just so you guys know, we are heading the other direction now. Um, richest things, we'll be slowly phasing those back in too, but we didn't think that they were as pressing of a need as, as some of the other things that are getting used, and people are asking us a lot of questions. So, just so you guys all know, that's, that's in the works.
Okay. Let's mention these restrooms. I know there'll be concerns with them. Uh, I was in that meeting last Friday with the Weaver Morgan Board of Health. They did say that, uh, under the new guidelines for, uh, condition yellow, uh, that normal cleaning of restaurants and pavilion, restrooms and pavilions was adequate. Uh, they didn't say nothing extra sanitizing, doing those kinds of things, so. Actually got that from the Board of Health, the Health Department, uh, got the names of who set it, and then the other cities, couple of them took down it, because that's, to me, that was a big decision, so.
Yeah, we checked with other cities, and that's what they all were doing, so. We're not taking any extraordinary measures unless we felt we needed to, but, uh, um, we have looked at this pretty hard, so. And, and Sean's right on top of it, so we should be good to go.
They said that condition yellow actually puts more responsibility back on the user.
Yeah, we, we have new signs made today, and they will be posted as well. Uh, there'll be some temporary ones now. It's the same thing with the playgrounds. The state opened up playgrounds. We just don't have the means to, to clean playgrounds, so they will be posted with signs notifying people that they could be contaminated. I mean, we can't guarantee their safety, and, I mean, there's just no way we could. Uh, manpower just isn't that deep, so the best case scenario we have, both there and on the bathrooms, will be posting signs and letting people know, you know, we're doing the best we can, but this may be just usual maintenance, which is going to be first thing in the morning, and, and it won't be done again until the next morning, so.
Well, that's the direction we got from the Health Department folks. So, Counselor Stevens.
Yeah, real quickly, you alluded to that, uh, Rich is going to phase open some of his stuff, so that's going to be, um, like the, the senior center and the community center. Can you be a little bit more specific?
Yeah, there's a lot of things there. Senior center is like at the bottom of priorities. That's just not going to happen for quite some time. I'm talking more mainly, uh, the exercise equipment and, and gyms. We still have some restrictions even on the gym, so really, team sports is not going to happen. Some of the individual stuff or even family events, uh, those could be happening. But Rich is working on that, but realistically, that's not going to start rolling until next week, so.
Yeah, but what about the pickleball? That's the real issue.
Pickleball, I can let Rich speak on that. I can see that happening any, anytime soon, Bart.
All right.
You still have to honor the distancing rules, and, and it starts creating problems. And so there's some things that just can't be done, like the splash pad and stuff like that. We cannot control those crowds, and we cannot maintain six-foot distances. So some of this stuff's just not going to happen until there's some changes. So, Rich, do you want to touch that more? I know Bart's concerned about that, but it has been discussed, so.
So we'll be opening at the community center on a limited basis, and, uh, the guidelines that we are following and we've been given is non-household groups need to maintain 10 feet of distance. And, um, so we will be allowing activities in the gym for household groups. So if household groups wanted to come in and play pickleball, that would be a possibility. But there's no possible way that we can, um, follow those guidelines and allow open play, which is the typical form of pickleball that we see. So we will not have open play under these current guidelines right now.
And this thing, we can't control who's there, and, and a lot of elderly people play pickleball now, and we don't want to be in them exposed. But who knows? You know, something could change this Friday when the government, governor makes a new announcement. I mean, they drop these things on us weekly, and we're, we're trying to adapt as we go along. Man, this has been a work in progress on a weekly basis, seriously has. This has been insane. So, we, we, we try to honor what the Health Department, the governor tells us and, and see what's the best fit for Riverdale, and we just adapt as we go.
Okay. Any other comments for which, have a motion to adjourn?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I just want to give you a heads up. South Foggden did approve the interlokal moving forward tonight unanimously on the fireside of stuff.
Well, that's good. Do, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Councilmember Ellis has a comment.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Just wanted to say that we, the Lions Club in Riverdale wants to honor the first responders, so we're giving the fire department, the police department, and Public Works $500 in grant each to use as they see fit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brent. That's great. I'm sure they'll appreciate that.
We need, we need to schedule a time when we can take pictures. That's it. Thanks.
Have a move to adjourn in a second? You have a second?
I'm bringing second.
Second.
Hey, motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is adjourned?
Good thing you said that.
Hey, uh, we okay just to move ahead with the RDA meeting? If it wants five minutes, you're right, you're home, you still could go if you need to. Uh, just welcome to the RDA board meeting this evening, Tuesday, May 19th, 2020. Uh, for the record, uh, we've got all, uh, RDA board members present, I believe. Uh, move first, uh, to public comment. Uh, you have anything for public comment for this meeting? Shaylee or Rich?
No, sir.
I don't have anything either, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to presentations and reports. Uh, first of all, the 2019 report of increment paper payments to develop. Uh, Mr. Eggit, you think you're doing this one, aren't you?
Yep, I am. Thank you, Mayor. This is our annual executive summary we do for our increment payment requirements. We currently have only one increment payment that we pay out, uh, annually, and that's tied to the 550 West RDA. You have it in your packet, the summary, but basically you can see by the numbers, we budgeted $210,000 for this payment at the beginning of the fiscal year. The total payment required, as you can see by the tax reporting found within your packet, is $192,613 to Boyer Group. We, this would be our 12th of 15-year payments to Boyer per our agreement with Boyer for the 550 West RDA area. Um, I will process the payment and have Mr. Brooks sign the letter that will go out to Boyer following this report. And, um, you'll see, following the executive summary, um, the summation of the information similar to what you see in years previous. Um, I'm, I'm open to any questions or comments that RDA board may have, and we defer back to you, uh, Mayor is the executive, or the chairman, excuse me.
Thanks. You have any questions for Mr. Eggit? Okay, well, next move on to the consent items. Uh, this item, uh, consideration approved, the meeting minutes for April 7th, uh, 2020, the RDA meeting. We have any changes or corrections? Seeing none, do we have a motion on the consent items?
Motion to approve consent item.
Second.
Okay, have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Unanimous in favor? Motion carries, action items. Uh, we have two action items this evening. The first one is consideration of RDA resolution R 2020 dash zero two to approve an agreement to develop land and ADL with the DRH company for the development of land in the 550 West and Riverdale Road redevelopment area. Uh, Mr. Eggit.
Thank you, Mayor. This is obviously nearly identical in process to what we did with the city council in their development agreement. This is a, a unique, um, ADL between Mr. Hanson and the RDA, um, agency. Uh, it is for the 550 West and Riverdale Road project areas. This, again, is, the basis of this was a document that Wade Budge prepared as the regional development agreement document, and then we split it for the two appropriate entities with the appropriate terms that are applicable to the entities. In this case, the terms of this agreement are associated with the RDA and its operation within the 550 West and Riverdale Road redevelopment area, and the concepts and ideas that Mr. Hanson has shared with the RDA board over the last, geez, many months, maybe even years D, and what we're trying to accomplish here. And Mr. Hanson is very close, and I can say this now, Mr. Hanson is very close on a, a property action that I think the RDA board is aware of, and this agreement would, would be what he needs to fulfill that, uh, property transaction as currently constituted. And, um, I think with that, that's pretty much the bottom line of it. It is, it is only different in the wording agreement to develop land, and again, some of the terms are different as they apply to the, the RDA board. And D, I would defer to you or Roger if you have any other comments to add at this time.
All right. Do you have anything, Roger, you'd like to add?
I'd like to just thank Mike and D, the RDA board. This is in the simple, uh, document that we've been working on for the last three or four months. This has been a long time in the making, not only the document that you have before you tonight for your consideration, but there's been an extensive amount of work that goes back to my predecessor, uh, for Riverdale City, Mr. Hanson, as well as, you know, countless efforts that Mike Eggit and D Hanson and myself and the city staff have put forth to assemble the property that you see before you in the document and development area of the community that was quite frankly run down. And, uh, the ultimate goal we as an RDA have is to provide increased development value and increased services to our residents that will benefit everybody. And, uh, this work has been going on for six-plus years that I've been there, and like I said, the previous administration as well as the city of Riverdale. And so I would commend D, I commend Mike and the other staff members that have worked on this project and brought it forth to you tonight. We hope to see us, uh, continue on and develop out. That's all I have to say. I'm just very grateful to my staff for what they've done.
Well, it's great job. There's a lot of good been done and a lot of hard work by a lot of people, so. Thank you, Roger. Um, do we have any more comment or discussion? D, did you have anything?
Oh, I just really want to thank Roger and Mike. I, you know, I really appreciate it. Oh, I just really want to thank Roger and Mike. I, you know, I really appreciate it. It has been five years in the making, over twenty acquisitions to where we are. Uh, this is a huge step what we're taking, but it's not the final. Um, you know, Councilmember Mitch, you mentioned, hey, there's a lot of items in this that are illegal. Uh, that is true. We're just going to have to continue our partnership. It's good, you know, working partners on this whole uh, project as we go. Well, there are some unknowns on what will happen. We're excited. I would say, uh, Roger, Mike, myself, to take this next step in phase one and get the, you know, the, the Xenarber brand's property acquired as we work and put improvements in it. It, it's, it's going to continue on to be, um, you know, several more years, but this is the next big, big hurdle uh, to continue the, the RDA project. So thank you, everyone. It's been, it's been great working with you, and I thoroughly enjoy it. It's, it's, it's been a great one. Looking forward to, you know, several more years.
Thank you, D. Thanks for all you're doing on this too. It's quite an undertaking, and it's going to be a, be a good thing for the city, so. Uh, do we have a motion on, uh, action item one of resolution R twenty twenty dash zero two? Mr. Mitchell?
Sorry, uh, Chairperson. Uh, I, uh, hope to approve resolution R twenty twenty zero two as stated in the packet.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second, uh, motion by Counselor Mitchell, second by Counselor Arnold. Uh, Ms. Evans, would you poll the council on this, uh, resolution, please?
Councilmember Stevens? Oh, Mr. Stevens, sorry. Mr. Ellis?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
Mr. Arnold? Mr. Hilton?
Aye.
Okay, it's like unanimous in favor. I'll move on to action item two. This is consideration to set a public hearing June sixteenth, twenty twenty. Receive and consider comments regarding the following. Uh, Riverdale City and RDA budget, final budget for FY twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one. Uh, Mr. Brooks, did you have anything to say on this?
No, not really. We're just following usual processes. We just got to get it under the dune so we get it taken care of.
All right, super good. Uh, any discussion on this, council? RDA board, excuse me. Uh, with that, do we have a motion that set this public hearing on June sixteenth?
So moved. Second.
So moved. Counselor Arnold and second by Counselor Mitchell. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, unanimous in favor. Move on to, uh, discretionary business for this meeting. Is there any discretionary items? And with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much, all of you, for being here.